Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our October 22 Town Board Meeting. Would everybody please stand in the day?
......................................................... I'm going to make a motion for the approval of our prior minutes for our September 24, 2018 regular Town Board Meeting, our October 1st, 2018 special board meeting, our October 9th, 2018 special Town Board Meeting, our October 11th, 2018 special Town Board Meeting, and our October 16th, 2018 special Town Board Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? The special Town Board Meetings were for the workshopping of my tentative budget into the preliminary budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Go straight to the resolutions, if that's okay?
Sure.
I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-227 for our Budget Transfers and Amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Are there any questions or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-228 for our abstracts payables. There are 73 checks totaling $199,826.20. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Brennan. Are there any questions or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-229 for our capital projects abstract. We have one check for Tyler Technology in the amount of $10,179. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-230, adopting amendments to the Greenway Connections, Greenway Compact Program. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Brennan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. The county contacted us last month, letting us know that there were changes in the amendments in the structure to the Greenway Comp and asked us to pass the new amendment adopting it. Since we are adopters of the Greenway Comp, we said we happily would. We first adopted it and joined the compact in 2004, and we were lead agency, and we have completed a SECA review previously. And what they're asking us to do here is adopt the changes, which basically, I think, say that they are amending it, planning documents cited in zoning law subdivision regulations to include seven new Greenway Guides, which are centers in green spaces, slower, safer streets, rural roads, building bicycle networks, convenience stores with gas pumps, recycling, waste collections, and green infrastructure. Is there any discussion? We're just approving the amendments to the Greenway Comp, the seven new. Any further discussion or any questions? Does this need to get referred to the Planning Board or anybody else, Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Greenway Comp has given us great protection in many of our lawsuits and certainly further protection in working with downtown law defenses. It's as useful to us as the LW RP is in our preserving rural character, so we're grateful for the work there. Resolution 2018-231, may I have a motion to amend the Employee Benefits Manual?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thanks. Any discussion? I have some, but I don't know if anybody else has any. What we're doing here is we are amending the compensation and benefits manual to allow for two weeks of vacation upon hire, because what we're finding is that we're hiring grownups who have been in the workforce, and they're taking a cut in vacation to come and work for the town of Rhinebeck. And since we want to attract professional people as our department heads, we want them to still have two weeks vacation when they first come to us. They won't be eligible to take it for the first six weeks, but they will accrue more. So we're allowing two weeks vacations for years 1 through 9, and then it changes after that.
You meant six months, right?
Yes, six months. I think we have to look at this further. We could pass this and come back. I think inadvertently, we have penalized some workers. If we hire a part-time worker who's going full-time, because this now says upon continuous full-time employment, say we hire someone who's been with us part-time for six years, they'll have to wait another nine years to get three weeks of vacation. So we may need to address that.
We should. Yeah, let's just table it. We don't need it today, do we?
We don't need it today, but it's something to consider. If someone has been with us for six years part-time, are we crediting them with full-time employment or half-time? Or are we getting them closer? I think we might need a recommendation from our municipal consultant or labor consultant. Any thoughts?
Well, my feeling is that people need more vacation than we're giving them. So it works to have people take time off.
Yes, and I think it would be nice to credit part-time. People who've been here a long time should be...
But are we going, if someone's been working 20 hours a week, are we going to credit them with a year of full-time work towards...
It's a year of their life's commitment.
I'm just asking. I just raise it.
I'd be inclined to say yes.
Me too.
Should we do some more work on this and get some opinion?
Yes. Yeah, table it, but I would say...
I think you should talk to the consultant. While, before we vote on this, I take it this is meant to apply to present employees as well as new hires after tonight?
Yes. Yes. The problem arose when we hired two new people who were grownups, and they're like, someone coming to work for the town of Rhinebeck, I'm losing a week's vacation. And, you know, it seems punitive.
When you refer to new employees, I just want to make sure we're not talking about only new employees.
I mean, one thing we could do is...
Plus our whole staff, in other words.
If we hire somebody that's getting two weeks of vacation or three weeks, we could honor that and say, okay, whatever you had at your last job, you will at least get that in a new job.
Yeah, but if that gives people much more than other people in the building get...
I understand. That's why we need to talk to them.
Yeah, that's, I mean, 'cause...
But, you know...
But yeah, 'cause we want to make being employed here as attractive as possible within one center.
I think we're going to table this and go back to the... Resolution 2018-232, second amendment to the intermunicipal agreement for equipment sharing with the bucket truck. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have the...
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion on this? The change of this amendment is, there were four towns that got the bucket truck together. We've amended it to allow the towns that have it to use it for work done in their villages or abutting towns that they might do projects with. Like, we do road shares with Hyde Park, and... But it has to be used by our crew. We cannot lend it out. Our crew has to use it. This amendment is also allowing it to be lent out with the supervision or the use of it with one of the four original towns in the case of a county-wide emergency.
Who pays our employees if they're out for a living?
Well, we would do, we would bill the town.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we're not allowed to give away or make a profit, so whoever, if we use it for the village, the village...
Just, we just get reimbursed for it.
Yes.
Right, gotcha.
But the previous IMAs did not allow us to use it outside our municipality. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-233, Guidelines for the Use of Sick Time for Routine Medical Appointments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. This is, we allow for sick time to be used for doctor's appointments, and then what we're saying now is you have to sort of make every effort to have your doctor's appointments outside of work time, and if you can't do that, you can request flex time so that you can come in and do your work after, stay later to cover your doctor's times. For instance, if everybody, if somebody had to go twice a week to a chiropractor or once a week for therapy or twice a week for therapy, and they can't get it before or after work hours, we can do flexible time so that...
Does it mean that they no longer can use sick time for it?
They have to make every effort to do it outside of work hours, and if they are not able to, they can make up the time.
Right, but does that, does it mean that they have to make up the time, or they still have the right to use sick time?
They have to make up the time. In a case where employee has frequent medical or dental appointments over a given amount of time, it does allow for some discretion. If someone's going to therapy twice a week, the town shouldn't have to pay for it. It can be made up.
Yeah, but the manual currently says you can use sick time for the...
Right.
And that's being rescinded?
Yes.
Okay, that was not clear.
If it's not clear, do you also want to tighten this up?
Yes, please.
Anybody else?
Is that clear?
Yeah.
This allows for discretion...
Yeah, no, I hear you.
... for a department head. I mean, I don't think, you have to tell me what you want to do. There's not a huge issue here. There could be issues, so what this allows for the department head to say, go ahead, you've got an emergency, doctor's appointment, go for it. But if you're out every week, twice a week getting PT, you've got to make up the time.
I think the resolution ought to include the possibility that the department head can allow the employee to use sick time.
I guess that's...
I think it's, okay, so what do you want me to do?
And also, was there some, isn't there also something about it that you can keep accruing sick time?
You can keep accruing sick time. In the union, there's a buyout. In our town hall staff, there's no buyout, and the whole idea is that if you get cancer and you're out for a year, you can use your sick time. It's a safety net.
Right, but so what I was thinking, and maybe, I don't know whether it's appropriate to address it in this resolution, was when we...
You can use, sorry, let me finish. You can use your sick time for a family medical leave qualifying event.
Right.
So what were you going to...
Is that, and it's specific to that, it doesn't...
That's specific to that. It doesn't affect this.
Okay.
So you just have to tell me what you want me to do.
I would, I would, well, I think what we're saying is if we added a sentence that says that adds a discretion to the department head, and if none of the other alternatives work, the employee can use sick time for the appointments.
I'm just not keen to zap everybody with a major change without, I don't know.
Well, what's that?
Why don't we table this, and why don't we have a executive...
That would be great.
... a discussion. It's not appropriate for executive session. We could have it with our, because of policy, in a workshop.
That would be awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
You know, maybe we want to go through the town handbook and, you know, type up a couple areas with them. All right, so we're tabling that as well. I, resolution... Do I have to bring something to the floor before I table it? I'd like to table the next...
You can, you can move it, Ed.
I don't explain. I want to table the next resolution for the certiorati petitions of McNally and Green. I don't have any information on this to put on without my knowledge, and I don't understand what the settlement is. I understand why this was done, so I'd like to table it for an afternoon.
If you want to table it, you have to motion it second, but if nobody motions it, then it never even got motioned. It doesn't need to be tabled, actually.
It's also a redaction.
So it's the same fact.
I think I just did that by explaining I wasn't motioning it. Does anyone want to motion it? Okay, moving along. Resolution 2018-235, Maintenance Department Invoices. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any questions about this? Who submitted these?
Is it the box that's back?
What are they for?
Where's this at?
I don't know.
Yeah. Maintenance, but I don't know.
Okay.
How about pools?
It's the pool stuff.
It was a pool, everything.
I didn't see a signed voucher.
There isn't a signed voucher. It's before us.
He didn't direct that package.
I know it's for a pool fix that you requested for next year, and there was some money left over in the budget, and we were going to pay for it now. I want to approve it, but I want more information, so...
And he doesn't need to close up the pool or anything? Do we understand that?
Pool's closed.
Right, so, okay, so it's for next...
But on the other hand...
Who's the meeting, who's the reason we find out what this is?
I just meant, was it...
Last page is the bid for pool.
Yeah, from the last...
Unless you can tell me what it is. I mean, it's familiar to me. I just can't remember what it's for, so unless somebody...
It doesn't sound like it's time-sensitive. I mean, the pool is closed, you're right, so what could the pool need right this second? So it's okay to wait?
Well, it was going to do some work, some work. These are just parts.
Ed, would you follow up on it and put it back on? I'm sorry? Thank you. Resolution 2018-236, Extension of Intermunicipal Agreement with Dutchess County for Snow Removal and Ice Control Services. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Does this, this doesn't say which street...
No, it doesn't, and I think that's River Road, and I know it'll be Morton Road, so...
Right, okay. We should probably talk about their...
Let's leave this open while we talk about, while we talk about...
The letter we got back. Do you want me to talk about it?
Yes, we wrote a letter to Bob Falcott, the Deputy of Department of Public Works. Shall I read the letter?
Go ahead.
Dear Supervisor Spinsia, I'm in receipt of your letter dated the 25th of September concerning County Route 85 Mill Road. Dutchess County Department of Public Works has been investigating long-term solutions to improve Mill Road for many years. Numerous geotechnical investigations have been conducted, and based on these studies, the cost to stabilize Mill Road, this is right around where Linwood is, there's a S-curve and a sharp fall-off, and it gets washed out every year.
Gets washed out every month.
Would likely exceed $1 million and could also involve significant property acquisition from the Sisters of St. Ursula or other landowners. In contrast, routine maintenance that the department performs on Mill Road each year is much less costly and far less disruptive to adjacent properties. With consideration to the very low traffic volumes on Mill Road, the department will continue to maintain Mill Road as it has done previously. If the town of Rhinebeck wishes to study and/or create a plan to stabilize Mill Road, which is a county road, and implement such a plan at the town's expense, you can expect to receive our full cooperation sincerely, et cetera.
Okay, so what I want to do next is, they say numerous geotechnical investigations have been conducted? Show me that.
But I've heard that the...
Yeah, but I'd like to see what somebody that knows what they're talking about, who's looked at it, has said, I'd like to see, numerous studies have been conducted. Show me, too. Second thing is, will likely exceed $1 million? Show me the estimates. Did you put it out to bid? What does it look like? I'm a little pissed off about this. They say that it would require significant property acquisition from the Sisters of St. Ursula, who I've been told said they can have the property for free.
That's what I thought you said at the last...
Yes, so what's that all about? And then finally, they say it's less costly to do maintenance every month. Show me the numbers. I want to see them. Oh, and then they say the very low traffic volumes, you didn't read the whole sentence the way it was written. It says, "With consideration to the very low traffic volumes recorded on Mill Road." Show me the records.
Oh, firing off another letter?
Yeah, I, what I propose to do is with your agreement, is to write a letter with that kind of tone in it.
Let's, we can be a little softer.
Yeah, well, I...
Be like Bob and the county.
Yes, I love, I love that letter.
But we do want the information.
Yes, so I'm, I'll tell them, yeah, we want to study it, but we'd like to have your records.
Yeah, we're going to start studying it by studying your records.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do, I'll do that, and I'll do the study.
Wonderful.
I have to live off my records.
Everybody, everybody...
And then when you get the flu, you can really dig into it. Now they'll be in trouble.
And I'll get Joel Tyne on it.
Oh, boy.
I mean, what's the current fund balance in the county?
55 million.
Yes, so...
It's about triple what we have.
So they're crying the blues over the expense of improving your road.
Okay, well, let's go back to our, Dutchess County. Who put this resolution, John? Was it Barry?
Superintendent, I was...
Has anybody, do we want to approve this? Barry wants to do it.
Sure.
I think so, because he's recommending it.
Okay, so it's, it also includes Mill Road.
Yeah, well, we must execute...
Well, how long did we wait before executing this? I mean, like, could start snowing any day.
Well, you know...
I don't know. I mean, I literally...
It's for next year, anyway, isn't it?
No.
No, it starts in October.
Oh, it's our story.
Yeah. I mean, we're not going to leave the roads un...
Yeah, we need to...
I mean, but we're not, we've never not plowed a road without having a side agreement. This is a new thing, so it's...
I think we should, I think we should go with it.
Yeah, I do, too. We have to solve this before we get the first...
The only thing I've heard since I lived on that road, from, not from Barry, but from...
Kathy?
Kathy, thank you. Was that because of the condition of the road, it's sometimes difficult to plow.
Yeah.
I was going to say dangerous, but I didn't want to...
Are you referring to just that part that's really bad?
Yes, the part from Linwood around to the coast.
There's two roughly 100-foot sections that are unpaved, and that road...
Washed out.
Washed out. I mean, I saw water shooting out across the road a couple, when it was, we had that big storm. It's incredible.
All right, so we have a, we're going to have a motion to approve the extension of the intermunicipal agreement with Dutchess County for Snow Removal and Ice Control Services. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Now, I'm writing another letter that I get to sign.
I guess I...
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
Is there any announcements or any of your liaison reports?
I have.
Sure.
Mr. Schulten, in this historic building, we're having historic doors renovated by Old House Restorations, man housing.
Great.
We'll do it as soon as we can get to it, hopefully before the weather turns really cold.
Great, thank you. Great, that's nice. We have to pick out a color.
Pick out color?
Is he painting them?
Yeah. I thought he was going to keep them soon.
Yeah, we have, we're painting town halls, so...
This is Beth's.
... this room, so we have to pick out a color, so...
Is that, that takes a Town Board Resolution to figure it out?
I think so. I want to say.
Hold on, I'm going to paint.
Okay.
Fix it up, I'm painting it.
Okay, oh, yeah.
All right.
Any other announcements or any of your liaison reports?
Yes. As you may recall, the people building the spa did a parking lot in the park for their use and then ultimately for our use after they had done building the spa. They were going to do the turnaround.
I'm sorry, say that again, the spa in the village.
Okay. There's a construction project in the village, the spa.
Yes.
The trucks and the...
Are parking in our...
Parking in our park.
Park, yeah, parked parking.
And the contractor made a parking lot for his people and trucks. That is exactly where we needed a parking lot, so basically, we got a free parking lot because, you know, the builder won because he has a place to leave his people during the day, some equipment, and we won because we got a free parking lot. The original deal was he was going to do a turnaround as well, which basically is the area right next to the pavilion so that, for instance, a fire truck or ambulance or whatever could go in and turn around, or a school bus could go in and make a U-turn at the, just in front of the... Anyway, the bottom line is the spa builder guy can't do it or won't do it because they're running, they're experiencing cost overruns, and they're not going to do it. So the, they got an estimate from Seabris to do it, which turns out to be 17,000, almost 17,500 dollars. It's basically an item four area that, just to give you an idea, six inches, 180 tons of item fours, that's a lot of item four, and a cement curbing. Turns out, we have granite curbing left over from another job which we could use, and what I, what I propose to do is ask, and I already asked Barry to give us an idea of what it would take if the Highway Department did it, so instead of spending 17,500 dollars, we could spend considerable less. So that's, but that's what's going on.
We have to bit it out. We have to...
Can you ask a question?
Our...
We can't, did, did we have that thing about the parking lot, et cetera, in writing? I mean, can we, how come they could just say they're not doing it?
It's a good question, I don't know.
I mean, maybe they, maybe they shouldn't be parking there if they're not going to honor their agreement? Or is that...
I think you're right.
I don't like that.
Well, I'll, I'll ask the question.
I mean, I, I mean, tell me if it's too aggressive, but I just, I don't, I mean, like, I'm sorry, you're having...
I would go the other way. If they promised to do it and they're not going to do it, then we need to hold them to their promise. I'll find, I'll find out what it is.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Consequences can come later, if that, if it comes to those.
Okay. We should fight out this week so that we can, so it's an ideal park there.
Yeah, I have a feeling it was a handshake, but we'll see.
A handshake.
A handshake, a pencil pen, yes. I have a report, well, not a report, and Gary, I think, is here to talk to us about some of this stuff, but I spoke with a representative from our waste hauler about the new, yep, about the new regulations for recycling, because as part of the environmental committee, we wanted some clarity on, on exactly...
on exactly what is going to be accepted, why the changes were taking place, and how the information was going to be dispersed. So what I learned was they're posting a sign there and then our employee there is simply supposed to use word of mouth to let people know. But I also was confused by some of the information he, I'm not confused because I'm familiar with the complications about recycling. But I was concerned about some of the things he said because he, I asked whether the numbers of plastic that would be collected were going to change, you know, like, are we not going to accept number five or number six? And he said, no, but then he went on to say that there are types that, as we understand it, are okay to submit, but that are hurting their ability to sell the recyclables to the places that buy them. And I don't know whether, and again, this may be more for the environmental committee, but I'm just wondering if we need some clarification.
Well, why? I mean, I have a private contract. I'm assuming they will let me know if I would discuss.
The pickups are not going to change. It's going to remain single stream. It's only sorting at.
At the Bruce.
At the. But John's telling everybody there.
Yes, it's just that he.
He doesn't have definite guidelines for it.
That's right.
It's totally up in the air because you keep changing things every day.
It's not our, they're a private vendor using ours contracted to use our space. Why would we oversee what they're doing? It's like leasing out our.
I guess I'm just bringing it to the board to say, is there anything we should be doing?
I'm Doug Westcott, Long Act Hook Road. I was at the transfer station this Saturday talking about this matter. And John said, okay, I'm only going to take one, two, three, four, and five. Six in the boat, we don't throw in the trash. Okay, we're going to have cardboard separate, going to have.
Glass and metal.
And then glasses would be, they got four things there. But he said, now, this changes every day, so go to the town website to find out what it is.
So.
I can play the town website.
Plastic, cardboard, glass, and metal.
No, plastic, one through five.
Right.
I have six in the boat, sixty, seven, eight, nine, ten.
But you see what the representative told me is some of those numbers.
Hold on, Brennan.
Okay.
It's plastic below five, cardboard, glass, and metal.
Yes. But then he said, go to the town website because it's a change every day.
Yeah, they're a private vendor. Unless they tell us what to post, we don't post, I mean, that's crazy. It's like we renting out our snack bar and then posting their daily menu. I mean, I think, I mean, certainly we want people to be aware, waste is an issue.
Is that not to.
No, our webmaster has not heard from them.
No, no, I don't think we're going to hear anything else from them.
We could reach out and just say, call Royal, or here's what we know now.
Well, and maybe I'll reach out to him one more time and say, we really need, we'd really encourage you as our vendor to provide us with better. I just feel that, you know, if we can get some good educational information out about the change so that it's done properly, and I only mean that just from a environmental stewardship, you know what I mean? I understand they're a private vendor. I just, I'll call him again because I would like, and I think it would be good if we put it on our website, right? I mean, there's no reason not to.
No, there's no reason not to.
So I just, and so I was just saying that I was concerned that there seemed to be a lack of information coming from them and it seems to be confirmed by what you're saying.
Thank you. Anybody else, I have a thing. Our zoning administrator is going to enforcing our sign law. We sent out a blast and we posted it on our Facebook page. There's been some, sign law was adopted in 2009 and there have been some case law decisions since then in the appellate court. And it seems like we need to revisit our sign law, which our attorney is going to do with our zoning administrator. However, in the meantime, what will be enforced is the, hold on. Our zoning administrator will be removing any sign posted on, in the public right of way, so four feet off the shoulder, not on private property, or taped to other, you know, stop signs or poles. All of that will be coming out and we will save it for a time someplace. We will let the public know. But we will be enforcing the all signs, political, anything in the public right of way is done. So at the same time, we will be looking at the sign standards that we've adopted and working to clarify our current law with recent case law. The public had a couple of questions about signs on cars. Signs on cars is not signage on a car or on a truck. It's an actual sign on the roof of a car or in the bed of a truck. That is not allowed. A truck or a car can have decals on paint job. They can't drive around with a billboard or park a billboard somewhere. So that's the clarification.
They can drive around with a billboard, but they can't park.
They cannot drive around with a billboard.
They can't?
No, not in the town or either. So we will be picking up signs in the public right of way on user roads. Most of our roads are user roads. And we'll be letting people who have businesses know that they just can't plop signs down in the right way.
But we will be saving those signs somewhere in case someone wants to pick them up.
We'll call our zoning department. Anything else?
How about signs that are off the right of way but are illegal? Like those big giant signs you've seen.
There are no billboards allowed, there are no giant signs allowed in the town of Red Hook. Our zoning administrator will have to notify people in line with an address. We had a status meeting with Tyler Technologies on our townwide reassessment and John Wolin, State Director of the Office of Real Property and Taxation for our district in White Plains, who's helping us oversee the project, came, not only did he bring his expertise, but he brought delicious homemade baked goods for everybody. So it was a very, it was a good meeting. We're getting great attention from John Wolin and the State Office of Real Property Taxation and the county with Eric Axelson. Everything is on time, on schedule. That's the update I have for that. Anybody else have any new business or any comments on non-agenda items or any questions?
Was there any discussion about food composting? Are you going to, do I say it or do you want?
Well, we're, I think, we're still hoping to know exactly what's being proposed. And what I told them was, I wasn't at tonight's meeting, so I'm still confused about what is actually, what a, yes, please. Yeah, there's stuff from, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so. Hi, Gary Bassett, Mayor of Village of Rhinebeck. For several months, as you know, I've been running a subcommittee of our environmental committee on food waste reduction strategy. So it's really made up of several municipalities, which includes the Village of Rhinebeck, Town of Rhinebeck, Town of Red Hook, possibly the Village of Red Hook, and the Village of Timbly, getting together collaboratively, trying to see what we can do for food waste reduction across all the municipalities. Because we know it's one of the most hazardous things and can eliminate some of our food recycling by a third if we do some sort of composting. We've been on an initiative, first we did a survey. We'll get the survey results out very shortly. But we had close to 400 respondents across all those municipalities on the survey. The next thing we were focusing on was doing either a pilot and then also getting a grant for education. So just a quick update on those two initiatives. We've been working with a local organization, a company that does, currently managing food waste compost recycling places. And they looked at, cited the town, at the Town of Rhinebeck and at the Village of Rhinebeck. The end of the discussion was the village site is not that applicable only because it sits in a floodplain.
That's not what Eileen said.
I'm giving you an update from tonight's meeting. So after we had the discussion, Brennan was there for that.
From who?
This was Community Compost, Eileen, who was, did the survey.
She came back to the meeting tonight?
She was up to be in tonight, yeah. And the result of doing that, the initial discussion was looking at the town and then they came to look at the village site. And then the village site looked attractive only because there's a lot of recyclables already there. The problem with the village site is it's close to a stream. It's possibly in a floodplain, which I need to verify. And the close proximity to houses confines it down to a very small area, which if we could do it there, may not be usable. The alternative is still back to the town, possibly at your transfer station, where it could be a reusable site for doing what we would call a air pipe system, not setting up a composting bins and that kind of stuff, but it would be just be on slab, air pipe on slab and maintaining it that way and start very small. We looked at some of the data to see, like, taking the Village of Rhinebeck. Even at the Village of Rhinebeck, if you got 100% participation, you'd be talking about fifteen cubic yards a week. We're not going to have 100% participation, it's going to be much smaller. So he wrapped it that down and said, we're going to start really small. And we're looking at, you know, a ton, which is two cubic yards of material possibly a week. And if you look at that across all, if we could get three to four to five sites, we're looking at 10 tons of material a week, which is still very small because that's still only, you know, five, you know, two tons, you know, tons is two cubic yards. So it's 10 cubic yards of stuff, which is not a lot. You mix it, two-thirds, one-third food, two-thirds brown, and that's how you get your composting. And you lay these pipes down and you pump air into them and you let it heat up and then 15, 20 days later, you have a product, right? So you could grow a facility very cheaply, very inexpensively by just doing pipe on slab as a process.
She even said we could do a pipe on asphalt possibly. Because there's a.
I called it a slab, but I don't know a slab.
Well, she said there was a difference, but that it would be okay.
And so we're still looking at possibly, how can we implement some sort of pilot program and grow it in a very small manner as we provided better information and material to people? Because part two of this is we would like to get to a grant. And there's a grant available, it's due October 31st. And that grant would provide, you know, a 50% matching grant for the education of doing food composting. At 50%, if we went in and proposed, we're talking anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000 for the grant, which most of that would be to hire a consultant to run it and then maybe $10,000 of that would be used for materials to distribute. And then we also have a donor who is willing to contribute $15,000 if we were to get the grant. So if we take $50,000, we get $25,000, which we have to come up with, you know, to execute on this grant if we were to get it. And then we talked about how can we take your balance of that? And what we talked was each of the stakeholders, each of the municipalities would be prorated based on population as in terms of whatever that balance is. If we could get more donors later in time, you know, we already have one for $15,000. That would, and we get the $25,000 from DEC, we're talking really $10,000, which we have to distribute over across of whatever the other stakeholders would be.
So after roughly three weeks, you have compost.
We have a material, we have a product.
Yeah, so what happens to that?
So we've had discussions in this subcommittee about what to do with the product. One of the, one of the issues would be to give it back to the municipalities for them to use to give to, back to their residents. That was kind of like a give back for people who are participating. The other discussion would be to sell it as a product. You know, there's people who will come up and buy it and then you give it and you sell it. So, but that hasn't been decided. We really got to, you know, if we want to continue, we got to get the ball rolling in terms of, do we want to set up a pilot site and do we want to go for the grant?
But what I don't understand is how we're going to set up. I guess this is my question, this is what I didn't understand from meeting with Eileen last week, is how we set up the pilot site, like what we're actually proposing, who runs it? Who either sells the compost or gives it away or?
There's, yes, and you didn't stay for the long, meaning we had all those discussions after you've left a couple minutes there because.
By the way, come to this meeting.
Yeah, sure, that's okay. Something this small, you really, there's probably not a company that would want to run that. Community compost, it's just too small.
Yeah, but she said they'd need like horse cars.
It's not in there, then you'd operate something that small. So if a municipality wanted to take it over, we talked about what was that effort if you did pipe on grade kind of thing? And it's a part-time kind of position where somebody has to set up the material, pump in the air and then 15 days kind of move it over and start another or you have multiple pipes running at one time or whatever. It's not a full-time.
Why would we do that if right across the river, there's a bigger facility that's up and running?
You could go to URA, exactly. You could transfer your stuff and pay for the hauling to get it all over to URA if you wanted to. And then we have to pick up whatever food product you do and have to make your organizations to be able to make your ring at the hauling.
What made it attractive to me was that we could have a private company run it for us. But if it's a part-time job that the town is doing, it's not feasible.
And that's, I'm giving you new information coming out of tonight's meeting. Originally, we were looking at use privatizing it and trying to get a company. Right now, we're refining, we're probably too small. Even if we get all of these municipalities, we're probably too small to do it.
I think we need to get, you know, Brennan's got to get up to speed and we need to.
So I just want to, we want to go for the grant though. So forget about the pilot for right now. Let's talk about a grant, which is due on October 31st, which will provide education.
But here's my question, here's a question, and not the but, but my question is, so the education, is it premature to do education if we don't have a spot for people to take it to? That we're educating them to?
You're going to take it back and?
Okay.
Right? No, the answer is no. Because based on the survey, we found that people really needed to be educated on this. And we found if we provided the education, we could start building the base. So it was, if we could get a grant to cover it, start the education and then try to figure out how, if we have enough, to build a pilot.
Or how many, it would increase participation.
And we're talking about, not only residents, but we're talking about the commercial establishments and et cetera to get them on board. So it's a matter of going for the grant. I'm willing to ask my board to take the lead on getting the grant. But if the grant is accepted, the stakeholders then have to help chip in or we don't have them, or we can't go. So my information to you, the town, is that if my board approves going for the grant, we can get the grant written, we can get it submitted, we can do all of that. The award is in January of next year, January 14th of next year. If that happens, then we have to have a formula based on any of the participants, municipalities who want to participate to, belly up to the bars.
Why wouldn't it be based on population when most of the waste is generated in the village with the commercial district?
I'm just proposing that as an alternative based on food collection, not on the browns, right? I mean, you have 8,000 people, right?
No.
Within the town.
No, 8,000 includes the village.
So how many, what's your population?
Two thousand or three thousand.
Twenty-five and five, yeah, twenty-five and five, we have two thirds.
So total, anyways, but so you have more population, so one discussion.
But you are for business.
Right now, businesses are saying they're really not interested.
So we're not going to include them.
Yeah, so it was, that's what we're talking about, just population. And this is just a proposal, we're not saying this is the way we got to do it. We're just saying, you know, like, the village activity has 1,100 people. Why would they pay the same as the Village of Rhinebeck?
Yeah.
Right, they would take something else.
It seems to me, though, that the issue is collection of.
You know what, I'm close to having to a big discussion about this because we don't.
I'll talk.
This is just, this, I'm giving you, giving you an update based on what we're having on food waste.
If you need an answer about this. If you need an answer about this.
I don't, no, I don't. I'm going to try to go for my board to go for the grant. If we get the grant, then we're going to have to spend --
Then we get an IMA and a plan.
I agree, I agree. That's all I'm saying, I'm bringing you up to date on what's going on.
This isn't the first time we've discussed it, the board is up to date, we know, we just don't, there's no plan to go --
Well, and hopefully, I won't have another conflict, so I'll be more up to speed from now on, because I want this to happen in some way. I mean, it's very important to me.
If it's feasible.
Yes, no, of course, I know, so I want, but I want to work to make it work.
All I'm saying is, for anyone involved. Today, I just want to give you, bring you up to date on what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Any other comments, or? Joe, Joe, anything having to do with Rhinebeck that you'd like to talk to us about?
Yes.
Come on up and talk to us about Rhinebeck.
Joel Toner, York County Legislature. The, so, former Highway Superintendent Kathy Kinsella, and I have talked about this, I believe she spoke, had liked numerous times to the County Department of Public Works, I have as well, the whole Mill Road thing, many, many times for many, many years. So thank you for passing that resolution September 24th unanimously, and for your passion about it. And so inspired by all that, about an hour ago, I started a new petition, sent it out to my list. It's tinyurl.com/fixmillroad. It's case-sensitive, all lowercase letters. And every time somebody signs that, emails are automatically sent, very polite letters, to the DPW Commissioner and the County Executive, all 25 of us in the County Legislature. Because, yeah, the, as far as the fund balance, you know, two years ago, it was a $57 million fund balance, county budget surplus. That was announced, last year was a $59.6 million fund balance, budget surplus announced for the county, and in June this year was announced $55 million. And again, by way of context, background, from '96 through 2012, there was on average about $20 million left over each year. So they have one, they have one. In addition to the $274 million jail will-nago expansion, which we're all paying for in Rhinebeck and Clint. I just got updated figures, there are 57 people in the Dutchess County Jail right now who have been charged with nothing more than criminal possession of a controlled substance. Not drug dealing, not aggressive or violent acts. All they've been charged with is criminal possession of a controlled substance. I'm talking about 18-year-olds, 22-year-olds, 23-year-olds. And they're costing us 25, $125 a day per person. So yes, for that petition, it's tinyurl.com/fixmillroad, all lowercase. And thanks to the town clerk for emailing me the text of your letter, Town Supervisor Spizia, and the resolution. So I took the liberty, I hope you don't go, I hope you don't mind, I basically copied and pasted your letter, Elizabeth, and the resolution into the petition. There's a woman named Kathy Cowell McDonald on Slate Corey Road. This is another issue I've been involved with for many years. That road is a death trap, I think everybody who probably knows it. And so I pulled together a meeting, there was a big accident that happened about a week ago. There's a bunch of people from Slate Corey Road gathered at Kathy Cowell McDonald's home, the Kathy originally owned. And there's a number of things that people are pushing for, I've already sent a number of letters to the DPW Commissioner about, the folks, the folks that I know, some of them want one or two stop signs. I don't know if I'm ready to advocate for that. But some people are so frustrated with the level of that, it's about one accident a month, there's three people that have died, at least three people, just over the last several years on that road. So they're asking for a rumble strip down the middle on that road, which, you know, there are rumble strips elsewhere along that 9G. They're asking for more guardrails, and they're asking for more enforcement of the speed limit. And so if you guys can possibly help lobby, I don't agree with everything that's going on with the county's criminal justice system, but I will say this for Kirk Gamparati, who's the undersheriff of Dutchess County, he, I sent him an email about 7:30 at night, he got back to me like 8:45. Now, there are people on Slate Corey Road who are still waiting for that promise that he made, oh, we're going to have a speed trailer out there, you know, so, and this is not an issue that I'm making up, there are people who are really putting a large fire under my behind on this issue. So, so yeah, I think the more of us, I've already reached out to the state troopers in Rhinebeck and Millbrook on this, reached out to the sheriff's office repeatedly, if you guys can help on this. And, you know, a few years ago, there was a study that the County Department of Public Works and the Poughkeepsie Dutchess Transportation Council put out about Slate Corey Road from 9G all the way to White Schoolhouse Road, which there were a lot of issues, and there are some changes that have been made. But Slate Corey Road doesn't end at White Schoolhouse. Slate Corey Road goes from White Schoolhouse, you know, to Center Road, and Bull's Head Road is not a picnic. So a number of the residents are also asking for, at the very least, could you do a study? So I'm just sharing that with you. I'm going to be doing a forum in this room, was it, I think, the 20th, I think it's a Tuesday, November 20th, at 5:30 PM, also on the county budget. We do not have an office of consumer affairs in the county budget, and if we're going to get serious about the opioid epidemic, this has all been in the papers, which is a Rhinebeck issue, there's too many families and people that I know in Rhinebeck who have been affected by the heroin, the opioid epidemic. We are not going to solve that problem as long as we are arresting and incarcerating people and not while drug issues. It's just, it's just not going to happen. The epidemic is going to get worse. That was about it. I just urge people to check out Robin Lewis's work, the Dutchess County Controller just issued a blistering audit of the county's Local Development Corporation and the Industrial Development Agency. You want to talk about money? Well, I consider myself fairly well-informed. I didn't know until I read it a couple weeks ago, and it's on the county controller's website. $100 million in tax breaks through the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency to Cricket Valley. That's Cricket Valley that's putting hundreds of tons of crap into our air.
$100 million in tax breaks?
$100 million in tax breaks.
Is this with the IDA?
Through the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency, Development Agency. I'm not pulling this out of thin air, it's right in Robin Lewis's report, Carl Schlegel, the deputy comptroller, worked hard on it with Robin. And I really strongly urge you, there's all sorts of other corporate welfare in there, but, you know, people have been going to jail over the 650 megawatt frac gas power plant on construction in Orange County. This is 1,100 megawatts frac gas power plant in Dover, close to us, and I basically launched a movement in Dutchess County against it, there was over 1,000 people signed on, about 10 of us in the legislature have signed my letters against it. And to find out, as I did, that they got $100 million in tax breaks, when we don't have, we can't get a commitment to fix the potholes on --
Yeah, they don't like to consult us for tax breaks with local projects either.
And then, I guess the last thing I'll say --
Pilot, there's no discussion about a pilot in our town if they decide they want to do it.
As far as the county budget, please check out the People's Budget for Dutchess County, the stuff I've written in the Poughkeepsie Journal, the op-ed columns, basically they have addressed none of it, and you can find that on Facebook. Last but not least, I was in Albany back in, I think, December 2008, I was environmental committee chair of the County Legislature at the time, and my mind was blown listening to presentations from Neil Selman and Paul Condon all about zero waste, and I worked with Shabazz Jackson, 656-6070, please call him. And so my heart is literally singing and bursting, because I tried, I brought Shabazz Jackson here, and we were going to try to do a food waste composting thing at the transfer station. And so basically, without me lifting a finger, you guys are going gangbusters on. So I really appreciate it, and I just, the last thing I'll say is, I just sent you guys an email, because I've worked with Neil Selman for a while, all over the country, there's been all this media stuff about, well, why bother recycling, we can't recycle, China's ruined it for everybody. So it's an article that appeared in Governing Magazine a couple months ago, it's called, Recycling is Crashing, Far From It. And it talks about how food waste is one-third of household waste. You can go dual-stream instead of single-stream like Oakland, New Jersey, do the curb-stalk recycling in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and unit pricing, the pay as you throw. Worcester, Massachusetts saved $10 million over the last 25 years. Basically, if you throw away garbage, that should be more expensive than recycling. So, that's it.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else? Any other comments or questions, any issues? If not, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thanks.